I'd like to call to order this, the regular town council meeting for Tuesday, September fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-one. If we could please rise for a moment of silence. We'll have the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
Here.
Laffin.
Here.
Marone.
Here.
Morgenstein.
Here.
Chortel. Tada.
Here.
Testa.
Here.
Zandry.
Here.
And Chairman Servoni.
I'm here. Why don't you call Chortel again?
Here.
Oh, thank you.
All right, Mayor, I think we have some acknowledging planned.
We certainly do. We are happy and proud to welcome two fine, excellent baseball teams here this evening. Both Cardinals, one seventeen-year-olds, and the seventeen-year-olds achieved a state championship and were runners-up in the regional match. And the other nineteen were district champions and runner-up in the state championship. Welcome to the Cardinal baseball teams! So these teams are sponsored by Post One Eighty-Seven, the American Legion, and Dave Gesert is here. Dave, I'm going to ask you to come up and maybe the coaches as well for the Seventeens. Would you like to say anything?
Absolutely. You know that. Thank you very much, Council, Mayor, for putting us on your agenda. I have to say, American Legion Post One Eighty-Seven, sponsor of this team, is extremely proud of their baseball teams. Both of them did an outstanding job this year, and the Post is very proud of them, and the town of Wallingford has every right to be proud of them also. The teams played with determination, skill, respect, and pride. Both teams displayed great citizenship along with a will to win, and win they did. I'd like to introduce the president and coach, Chris Bishop, for the nineteen-year-old group, and Andrew Christopher with the Seventeens, and general manager, John Christopher. If you gentlemen would come up. Chris, I know you like to recruit early, but I think that one's a little young.
This is the newest recruit for our three-and-under team?
Handsome devil. All right. Would you guys want to come up here or use this mic? And then you and the mayor can coordinate the certificates for the gentlemen and bring them up one at a time.
Counsel, Mr. Mayor, thank you guys again for acknowledging us. This was an unbelievable year. This is the best season that we've ever had as a program. For the Seventeens to do what they did and the Nineteens, it's the farthest we've gone. It's a testament to not only the will of these boys, but the backing of the town, because most of these boys have been together since they were seven, eight, nine years old, grew up through this program, and it's been really, really special to watch what they've done. So thank you again. Yeah, so our Nineteens, most of them are unfortunately away at college now, so we've only got a couple of those boys here, but obviously they all wish they could be here right now. You're going to hold it? Okay.
Hunter Geisler. Bill Gory. Justin Hackett. Parker Hunter. Nick Iannone. Justin Lucibello. Ethan Rosenthal. Kyle Simmons. Nick Velardi. Aiden Weir. Our bat boy, Dylan Patel, coming up, Dill. Chris Barkesy and Todd Gramatica.
Come on, Todd. Get it together. Thank you again.
Okay, then we have coaches for the Cardinal Seventeen.
Yep.
And Christopher Ames. Andrew Christopher. And John Eno.
Matt Katie.
I might say at this point...
Yeah, we'll do half.
They want you to have a certificate. They want to come up here and then have a photograph.
Okay.
Okay, so when you get your certificate, just head up here.
Charles Ennis. Paul Gory couldn't be here tonight. Andrew Guy. Braden Hastings. Michael Ludovico. Jack McGovern. Jacob Morrison. Connor Nicisher. Alex Owen. Jack Pesta. Derek Riscotti. Devin Rodriguez could not be here. Owen Saint Amont. And Trevor Vanoy.
That's a picture of first-class baseball players, I'll tell you.
Players and coaches are invited up to room three fifteen on the third floor. We have a celebratory cake for you, and I think there's more cake than you guys can eat. So if you'd like to share it with your parents or grandparents, bring them up too. Room three fifteen on the third floor. Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Council Chairman, members of the council. We appreciate it. Thank you.
I want cake. I'm leaving for cake.
I'll save you a piece of cake.
I'm going out for cake.
Okay.
All right, let's give them a couple of seconds to clear the room. Congratulations. Thank you for coming. All right, can we have a motion on the items remaining on the consent agenda?
Mr. Chairman, I move we approve or accept consent agenda items A through R, U, V, and W as amended.
Second.
Moved and seconded. All those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, the consent agenda passes. The items removed from the consent agenda are S and T. First is three S. Can we get a motion on that?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, I move we approve a bid waiver for fiduciary to continue as Town's pension advisor for fiscal year ending in June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two, at the currently yearly fee of sixty thousand dollars.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Mr. Senna is here. Counselor Tada, that was your item.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I asked for this to be removed from the consent agenda. Number one, just because of the amount of sixty thousand dollars was a little bit... seemed a little high for a bid waiver, so I just wanted to understand the rationale behind that being a bid waiver. So if you just have any info on that, Mr. Senna, thank you.
Good evening. For those who don't know me, I'm Tim Senna. I'm the deputy comptroller. So a bid was supposed to be done, and it kind of slipped through the cracks.
Tim, a little closer to the mic. Thank you.
So I believe a bid was supposed to be done, and it kind of, with the comptroller retiring, it kind of slipped through the cracks. When it came to my attention that it needed to be done, I brought it to the mayor. The company has agreed to hold the fee. We will do a bid for next fiscal year. And I also just believe, I think we need a little continuity with the pension commission, with the comptroller being gone, having a new pension advisor is going to really throw things into a loop. So that's why we're requesting it.
Okay, and do we know in the past, when we've gone up to bid on this, have there been a lot of bidders? Do you know? I know you're... You might know.
I think there's probably, you know, I'm guessing, but there'll probably be three or four.
Okay. Okay, I think that's... I think those are my only questions. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. So the fee for the pension advisor, is that paid out of pension funds or part of the pension budget?
It gets paid out of the pension.
Out of the pension funds?
Yes.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Counselor Testa?
Thank you. I appreciate the explanation, and it does seem to make sense. I was going to object to this, at least being on the... something flying through as a bid waiver, because it's something that clearly is an important position. But I do understand, in the interest of allowing the comptroller's office to settle in and move forward with us, a one-year contract, I have no objection to this. I appreciate you doing it in this manner. But I would expect that next year we'll see a full bid and a full review, because I think the council needs to play a larger role overall in the administration of the pension fund, and this would give us an opportunity to participate a little bit more fully than we have recently. So I appreciate that. Thank you.
Questions or comments from the public? Mr. Gross, I think that's you.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Just a question on the pension. I didn't hear the full explanation, but I was coming in when they were leaving. The comptroller's saying it's for continuity because we... to understand, we keep the same business that we've had there, so there's no change right now. Is that the rationale?
I'll let him answer the question.
Yes, I'm through the chair. I wasn't asking.
I don't think that's completely it. It's because it was due to be bid because of retirements and disruption in staff. It was not able to do that. Mr. Senna is now functioning as comptroller as well as deputy comptroller, and we'll be choosing a new comptroller. So the issue of getting out to bid is another added feature that we're not able to take on right now. We fully expect that there will be a bid going out prior to the next fiscal year. The current advisor is holding his price, so there won't be an increase in price for this additional work.
And to price? I mean, I think there are some companies out there that wouldn't even charge. I assume the pension is over a hundred million, maybe two hundred million or more?
It's about, just over two hundred million.
So companies like BlackRock and T. Rowe Price and Fidelity would be, I'm sure. I mean, I don't work for them or anything like that, but I'm just wondering, and their size and the ability to offer more to the town that has a large pool of money, maybe a quarter billion dollars? Two hundred and fifty million in that ballpark?
Two fifty, two fifty.
So somewhere in that range. There are more things that are out there that the big boys can offer that... I'm not saying anything against this company, but we are a hu... That's a good sum of money to invest. And so I would hope that, in the way the markets are moving now, it's a different world. And hopefully that you will do something next year, because I don't even remember you guys going out to bid once in ten years, probably. I mean, the mayor might be able to answer that.
I don't know the time factor, but we have gone out to bid on this.
If this was a bid, there was an extension, and then there's been bid waivers.
Right, that's what I'm saying. So it hasn't gone out. Nobody's...
We have... I have every intention to make sure that a bid is done by the start of next fiscal year.
But originally, there was a bid on this, and prior to that, there have been bids. I mean, this isn't a continuation of a relationship that was not the subject of a public bid.
But it goes back to when Merrill Lynch or Columbia was around, so that goes back quite a few years. It hasn't gone out to bid in all the years that this company out of Windsor has been doing it for the town.
I'm not sure of those details. I want everyone to be aware, though, that this advisor is not a portfolio manager.
Right, and that's why...
They're not a manager of the funds. They advise the town on policies and principles.
They advise the pension commission. They provide reports for the pension commission.
Right, and that's... You can get a lot more for what you're spending than just those nice booklets you get every quarter. Thank you.
Anything else from the public? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
Yes.
Laffin.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Morgenstein.
Yes.
Chortel.
Yes.
Tada.
No.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Servoni.
Yes, motion carries. On to T. We have a motion, please.
I move we approve a bid waiver for the four fifty-seven plan investment consultant services of the Sage View Advisory Group, LLC, in the amount of eighteen thousand, seven hundred and fifty dollars through June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two.
Second.
Evening, Counselors. Jim Hutt, Town HR Director. The reason for this bid waiver is similar to the one that Mr. Senna described. The bid for the four-five-seven investment advisor was not done prior to the comptroller leaving. So Sage View was the prior investment advisor that we had prior, up until September thirtieth, two thousand and twenty, when that contract was discontinued. So this has no cost to the town. The fees that are charged by the investment advisor are shared between the participants in the four-five-seven plan. So that, to, you know, just kind of summarize, the reason for the bid waiver request is similar to what Mr. Senna described for the investment advisor for the consolidated pension plan.
So the four-five-seven is the public employee equivalent of the 401K, right?
That's correct.
And that, so the funds, the fees paid to this contractor are paid out of the funds that are contributed, right?
The funds, the portfolios of all the participants, yes. So it's a prorated fee that's, you know...
If you could just keep the mic closer to you.
Thank you. So, yes, that's correct.
Okay. Counselor Tada, your item.
Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Hutt. How are you?
Good, how are you?
Good, thanks. Just, the explanation helps, but my question, the wording of the memo. So it says October first, two thousand and twenty-one, through June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. And then in the bottom of your memo, it says it's an interim matter as the town will be going out to bid in the near future. So is it going... This is going to be in effect through two thousand and twenty-two, or that's not what you're...
So my plan is, this function's going to be transferred over to the pension commission to do the oversight of this, and then that will fall under the comptroller. So the plan is to have this go out to bid as soon as possible, but understanding, given the staffing issues, that it could run until the end of the fiscal year, June thirtieth of two thousand and twenty-two. It's not going to go into effect until October one if the bid waivers approved, because they're prorating the fee. The annual fee is twenty-five thousand dollars. If you divide that by twelve, it's a prorated figure. So this figure of eighteen, seven, fifty, is that twenty-five thousand divided by twelve? And then I think that's for, what, nine months? So that's how I came up with that fee, but that could be less, depending on if we're able, you know, to get the bid out and the bids put into place before June thirtieth.
Okay, understood. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. That's all.
Counselor Chortel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a question for, like, I don't know if it's you, Mr. Hutt, or Mr. Mayor. Where are we with the replacement for Mr. Bose? Are we... What's our timing?
We have applicants, and I believe we'll soon be scheduling interviews. Jim?
That's correct. Yes, there's a list that had been provided to the mayor. We're just getting ready to schedule the interviews for the selection.
So probably an offer in the next month, maybe, give or take?
I would expect so, yes.
Okay. Thank you.
Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Jim.
Good evening.
You know, I think we had a similar discussion a few weeks ago, I don't know if you were here, about fiduciary duty with regard to this plan and all of that stuff. And while there might not be a cost to the town and the taxpayers, there is a cost to the employees that participate. So, you know, in my mind, it begs the question, why, when we do a bid, we're looking for the lowest cost, right? That's the intent of doing a bid.
Lowest responsible, yes.
Lowest what?
Lowest responsible bid.
Yes, responsible bid, and, you know, we are looking for someone to invest or make recommendations, or to make certain vehicles available through the four-five-seven plan for employees to elect to participate in. Is that generally what this group does?
What they do is they review the menu of options that employees have. And then through some logarithms and algorithms that they have, they then remove investments that aren't performing well, and they add investments that do perform well for employees to pick from.
Yeah, and it would be of concern to me, if we're... If we have a fiduciary duty, we're looking out for our employees, the performance. So why is it a bid and not an RFP, something more specialized about, you know, how well these people do in doing their job and that kind of stuff, instead of more weighted, it appears, towards cost?
This was something we came before the council last year with a very similar document or request, and it was approved. So if there is a question, I'll have to defer to purchasing or, you know, maybe the finance department, what's the appropriate thing to do. But we went out with a bid waiver to the council last year, and it was approved without any question on this matter.
It will be a two-part bid, so there'll be a price section and then a grading of the...
Okay, so there is... It's not a straight, traditional bid?
Correct.
It's a hybrid?
Yes.
Okay, so what I'm hearing is there is a scoring component based upon some sort of criteria that somebody is developing for the purposes of awarding this contract, and we expect to be there by the end of the year with putting out a document. Is that what I'm hearing?
Correct, yes.
Okay, and that through the end of... It's the calendar year that we're talking about, not the fiscal year?
No, the fiscal year. That's what I put in...
Okay, so...
It's our plan to have something in place honored before June thirtieth, two thousand and twenty-two. A fully awarded, you know, bid.
Okay, so you're saying it's going to take almost a year? I mean, we're at the beginning of September to get this done.
I'm giving... I'm providing some cushion for that. This is outside... I'm not going to do this bid. This is outside my level of expertise. It's going to have to be, you know, put together, and it's going to have to be reviewed by people, and then the bid awarded from there.
Okay, who reviews that criteria? Is the pension commission?
They will more than likely do that. This was something that was transferred over to them. They've agreed to do it, but nothing has been formally discussed with them yet, as far as I know. Maybe Jim did, but I was not involved in those discussions.
And if this particular item that's before us fails tonight, what happens? Do you lose somebody coming up with this menu of options? Or do you save those individuals that are engaging in this process, this cost? What happens?
Well, if we're not able to move ahead with this, then we are without the services that we need. I mean, what we're saying is we can't in this interim, and we're hoping before June of two thousand and twenty-two. But given the unknowns of getting the spec out, written, and then sending out and getting returns back, we hope it's by the end of this calendar year. But given those unknowns, we need this expertise to be provided in that interim. So we would be lacking that expertise, which we're saying is not a good thing.
Well, is it possible, and I don't know, because, I mean, I don't know this, but is it possible to not have this, let's say, for the next year? And then have a biannual review of the menu that's available, performance and that kind of stuff, and save these employees this cost? Can we do that within the confines of what we are required to do?
I don't think we can, because we are obligated to see that the programs, the investments being offered by Nationwide are appropriate, they're justified, they meet the tests. the tests of those who are familiar with the Wall Street and the subject matter of investments. We need someone assuring us that what is being provided by Nationwide is in the interest of our employees. And we don't have the expertise ourselves to render that opinion. So hence, we're looking to an outside person to advise us. But we would be at risk in not doing the due diligence and having this investment information, this review, this analysis, that assures us that the company that we've chosen Nationwide is doing the job they're supposed to do.
I would assume that at the time that they were selected, that it was recommended they be part of the menu, that they were qualified. So that would set a place in time. And under Graham Rudman, I believe, if those things are changed, there has to be some sort of notice to whomever they're doing business with as to, you know, their CEO went to jail, or something like that.
But we're not going to be aware of that, because we do not weekly, daily, monthly review what is happening with companies and the various types of investments. That's what this firm does. And they watch the various categories and indices, and they advise us when something is going the wrong direction, and advise us when, you know, we shouldn't have that in the portfolio anymore. We may not hear that from anyone else. This company only works for us. We need that advice on a regular basis.
So I don't know what that, this company only works for us? They don't do this service for anyone else? No, I'm just, you said, I'm just trying to figure out what you said.
Okay. You've got to bear with me, then. They work for us in the sense that they are not making other money on this. A company like Nationwide is making money in what they're doing. They may have a different view of the quality of their product than someone else who's looking at it from a more objective standpoint, comparing it against the products of a multitude of other fiduciary offerings. So they, at Sage View at this point, is working for us. No one else, and we pay them for that expertise. Now, do they have other clients? They probably do. But I'm saying, in terms of this subject matter, they have no other oar in the water, no other bias that might have them overlook something. Their sole duty is to tell us what we should know about what's being offered as investment vehicles, the health, the vulnerability, whatever it might be.
And I'm just trying to, you know, are we statutorily required to have this? Because I'll tell you, like, through the state, I have a four-five-seven. I have one of these plans. And I could tell you, I've been on there, what, six years, something like that? They've never taken anybody off the menu. I don't know what the history is here in this town. So, you know, are we just spending money to spend it?
No. So if I can provide some context for you?
Sure.
In the fall, spring, fall of two thousand nineteen, we received notice from Nationwide that they were cutting back on the guaranteed rate of return, which was three and a half percent. And at that time, when I got the notice, met with the mayor Janus, you know, Jim Bose, and said, there's a, you know, there's an issue here. This has been going on for years. There was this guaranteed rate of return, and now Nationwide is saying, all of a sudden, this isn't going to happen anymore. And at that time, we, through Janus, sought the services of a law firm, Robinson and Cole, to come in and brief us on what we should be doing for the four-five-seven plan. And so what we did was based on sound legal advice, who I know to be a highly respected attorney in the pension field in the state of Connecticut. And so that's how we got to Sage View, coming up with an investment policy for the four-five-seven plan, taking it to, moving it into the realm of the Pension Commission, who are highly qualified, you know, people that manage this type of stuff. So we were looking to provide employees the best opportunity for them to invest their money. And that was the whole basis of why we did what we did. Now, I've heard from other people that their companies, their towns, they don't do that. I don't know if that makes it right, but all I can say is that I think we have done everything we possibly can to benefit employees for their money that they put into the plan. So I think we're doing what we were advised to do, and I think we should continue to do that.
Well, when you say that, and I don't want to belabor this, but can you show me us quantitatively that there has been a benefit to the plan that exceeds the amount of cost? Because that's the analysis.
No, pardon me, but that's not the analysis. In fact, Sage View has come up with some advice regarding some investments that were being offered, and said these should be removed. They really are not. Isn't that not correct, Jim?
Some were removed, and they also, when they became involved, sat down with Nationwide and were able to reduce a lot of the fees that Nationwide was charging that no one knew about. And they were able to negotiate a different rate of fees that employees would pay. So they have contributed their level of expertise in assisting us in providing the best available menu of options for town employees.
I appreciate the discussion. You know, we're just sort of peeling back the onion on this, but I thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Tata.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Is, I'm just trying to figure it out. Is the only reason we're asking for the bid waiver because there's the lack of staffing in the Comptroller's Office right now? Or would you be asking for this even, for the bid waiver, even if we have the staffing?
If the bid had been implemented and had been properly completed, we wouldn't be here. But with the retirement of the comptroller, it's just didn't happen.
Okay. So, but it sounds like from Mr. Mayor and from what you're saying, you are going to try to bid this before June thirtieth, even though we are approving it through June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-two. But your goal is to bid this before then, once the staffing is in place, correct?
Sure, yes.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Morgenstein.
Thank you. Thank you, Jim. So Mr. Bose had left when this company was hired?
No.
Or right around that same time?
No, Sage View had been, in the fall of two thousand nineteen, when we received word, spring, fall, we received word that there were, Nationwide was cutting back on the guaranteed rate of return. We had sought the input of Sage View at that time, and the town had, through the end of the year, through the end of two thousand nineteen, had engaged their services in reviewing the menu, you know, the options that employees had. They were negotiating with Nationwide, a restructuring of the fees. And then, starting in January one of two thousand twenty through September thirtieth, they were the recipients of a bid award that the council approved. That ended on September thirtieth. And, you know, the bid just never got put together. And here we are today requesting the bid waiver.
Okay. And did Mr. Bose give proper notice when he was leaving? And do you have an estimate of when it was that, how long we've been without him? When did he leave?
I think he left in June. I'm not exactly sure when his last day was.
And so did he give us, like, a ninety-day notice, you know, as a professional, or was it a sudden departure? Do you recall?
I mean, he did give notice, and he was tasked with that work, but, you know, it didn't get done.
Right. Oh, of course. Someone's leaving. No, I think more to my question is, here we are in September, and we have kind of this answer of, yes, we have people that we're arranging to interview, and we have people in the audience tonight relative to the animal control officer position, and not through any fault, I believe, of yours, but we've had, you know, a fair amount of turnover, and also with the in-between times making things very difficult. So in your mind, he gave a proper notice, left in June, and here we are in September, having put together applications, and we're just now going to be starting interviewing for his position?
I mean, I'm assuming that, I mean, I think under the personnel rules, you only have to give two weeks' notice. So, I mean, he did give notice.
So he may have only given two weeks. Okay. I mean, I worked with...
No, no, no. I mean, he gave notice, but, I mean, under the rules, you only have to give two weeks. But that's a very, that's a very comprehensive job with quite...
Right, right. I'm very surprised at that, if that would be, because if I leave my job, it's ninety or a hundred and twenty days. It's some long period of time. So I find that pretty interesting, too, I guess, if government functions a bit differently than my world. Two weeks' notice, but probably, you're thinking he probably gave us more. Okay. I was just...
Well, I know he gave more notice than two weeks, but you're only required to give two weeks' notice.
Right. Okay. Yeah. So he gave us notice to be trying to get things in place for us. Looks like the mayor has a comment.
Mr. Bose was a professional. The entire time he was ever here, he was talking about leaving. It was a month's, we were well aware that he was planning to go. But it was not just Mr. Bose. I mean, at the current time, we have two people in purchasing. We've had offices severely impacted across the town, either directly or indirectly by COVID. So it's not just one area. It's, and Mr. Bose, I was aware of him looking to leave for several months. I was hoping he would stay longer, but...
Well, I think that's exactly my point. That makes me happier with Mr. Bose, but less happy with our timeline of finding his rep...
No reason for anyone to be upset with Mr. Bose.
Yeah, I'm not at all implying that. I'm saying, I'm uncomfortable that if we knew for many months that we weren't going to have a comptroller, that we're now, three or five or six months later, now starting to interview. I'll leave it at that.
Well, just to have everyone recollect, we're in a period of time where you couldn't be sure whether we'd be opening offices the next day. Constant issues over COVID, over the direct and indirect effects of that across the workforce, and it was a very difficult period of time, and we're not over it yet.
And we don't have the infrastructure to hold our meetings in a hybrid fashion, and I'm wearing my mask and concerned that I'm passing illness along to people. But again, I'm going to leave it at that.
So the infrastructure is in place, and we are just waiting for the hardware to come in. It's been ordered. But the line has been, if you look behind where I'm sitting, there's a yellow data line. So we've been working on it.
That's good to hear.
Counselor Testa.
Thank you. It is clear, to me anyway, that we're overdue for a lengthy special meeting where we're all enlightened as to how the pension fund is managed overall, because we've all had questions over the years. So I think it's clear that there's a lot we need to talk about if we want to be well-versed in how this is all managed.
This isn't the pension fund, though. This is the four-five-seven plan.
Well, it says the pension advisor. That's why. It's a perfect example. I'm...
No, this is item three T. This is an investment consultant.
I understand that, but I'm going, maybe going back to the last one, too. All I'm saying is, there's a lot going on here with how our investments are handled. And I think it's probably overdue that we have a meeting where we can really talk about the whole thing, get a better view of what's going on. The four-five-seven, please enlighten me as to exactly what that is, before I ask any more questions.
So the town employees have the ability to defer a certain, you know, portion up to income limits of their compensation through the course of a calendar year. And the four-five-seven plan is a vehicle in which they can do that.
Okay. And how does that differ from the pension plan? When was this offered, and was it offered in order to pull people away from the pension plan?
Well, this doesn't pull anybody away from the pension plan. This is an additional retirement option for employees on top of the pension. So the town really has no involvement in terms of directing investments. It's entirely up to the employees to direct their own investments.
So the fiduciant that was discussed in the previous item is in no way related to this agenda item?
I think they're two separate issues.
They're totally, totally separate issues.
Yes, that's...
They all deal with the investment and management of funds for our employees.
But under two separate, two separate...
If I'm the only one up here who is confused about this, then, and I'll admit to being a little bit out of touch, because we talk about all this stuff so often, and who manages what. I was looking at this tonight, I'm saying, okay, so we have, we have somebody who manages our money. We have somebody who gives us reports on how our money's being managed. And then something else popped up, where we have somebody who is overseeing and throwing in some suggestions. So I apologize if I mixed up the bag of money that we're talking about. But there's a lot going on here.
Maybe I can help.
I would hope so.
The pension program is the town's offering of a pension program. Employees sign up for it, and the town manages the pension program. The four-five-seven is private investments. Those are investments by individuals, employees who choose an annual deferral of income, and they invest that income, similar to like a 401K three or a number of other vehicles. That is their investment. So the laws are a little, in my word, squirrely with regard to four-five-sevens, as opposed to 401 threes and the other types of vehicles. We, the town, chooses the product that can be invested in, which is a Nationwide product at this time. In fact, it's a list of products. There are still fiduciary responsibilities for the town's exercise of its responsibilities on a deferred income plan, somewhat different than a pension program, but nonetheless, there are fiduciary responsibilities. But overall, the decisions made by an employee on the deferral program, that's their investment. Investments made there are their money deferred from their annual income, and they have full ownership of that, and not at this point, but when the money is paid out, once they retire, or otherwise eligible to receive money under the four-five-seven. And I appreciate that, and I understand that. I guess my point was, there's a lot going on, the management of our employees' money, that we could probably be better versed in. I could be better versed in. If I'm the only one, so be it. I think it would be a good idea for us to get together and talk about this in a little more detail, because we're placed, we're presented with these, we have a consultant that does this on this plan, we have a consultant that does this on this plan, we have different people that manage the money in this plan, different people that manage money in this plan. There's a lot of stuff there. And if all we, if our involvement only involves approving things without a real true understanding of what's going on, I sense we're not as involved as we should be. Maybe that's my feeling on this one. Okay, I've said enough. Thanks.
Counselor Chertel.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a few comments on the last few comments. Mr. Bose's retirement was in the April ninth, two thousand twenty-one Record Journal, but I think I, we knew about it before then, and he stayed on past when he was supposed to leave to get us through the budget. So as we, as Mayor Dickinson and Council Morgenstein, no one is besmirching the legacy of Jim Bose. He did talk a lot, but we won't get into that. You know, yeah, I wish we had a comptroller, too, but I'm going to, you know, let's just take a step back. We have hired, in the last three months, a new fire chief, a new police chief, a new superintendent. The superintendent wasn't the mayor. But I mean, no offense to accountants everywhere, but if I had to rank the positions I want filled as a resident, it's probably going to be in that order, police chief, fire chief, and then comptroller. So, no offense, Mr. Senna, if you get the job, if you're even applying for the job. So I feel like we've had a lot of openings, and we've done a good job as a town filling them, and I'm glad to hear that we're looking at making... that we're looking at making an offer the next, you know, thirty days. So, you know, I, I think it's a little context. In terms of the pension fund and kind of a deep dive into that, please God, do that after January. That's my first comment. And I did do that already, just a, just a reminder. We had an agenda item on February 27th, 2018, that I sponsored for the very same reason. So, we did do an overview and discussion of the town's pension plan, including current status and future opportunities and risks. So, that was about two and a half years ago. We did do that. Maybe it wasn't memorable enough. I don't know. Maybe things have changed, but you can steal that wording, but just do it after January. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counsel, Counselor Tada.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I, I certainly don't want you to think that I'm not sympathetic to the staffing needs, because I under, I'm sure that's a, that's a, you know, very stressful situation, but I'm also having a hard time if I support something that I think is not financially the best thing for the town, just because there's a staffing issue. So, I'm just kind of trying to decide, you know, where, where to vote on this. But one thought just came to mind. If we are thinking that we're going to put this to bid within this calendar year, instead of us approving it through June 30th, 2022, if the timeframe were maybe just shortened, then that would get you below the bid waiver limit, and then we wouldn't even need to vote on this. Or does it have to be, do you have to do this for that specific timeframe?
No, I don't have to do it for that timeframe, but I'm just trying to build some, some type of a cushion in here for, you know, there'll be a new comptroller, you know, taking on new responsibilities. And so, this is, if we can get it done, there's, if we can get it done sooner than that, then, you know, that's what we're going to do. So, that's why the June 30th date was put in there.
Okay. All right. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Counselor Marone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'm a little surprised that we're still talking about this for this long. We're talking about nine months, you know, to get us through to the next one. So, I think that, I have no issue with this tonight. I guess my suggestion would be Mr. Chairman Servoni, that when you're chairman in the next term, that we add this to the agenda, you know, to talk about the, the whole pension thing again.
Well, when you're re-elected in the next term, you can request it.
Certainly will.
Of whomever happens to be chairman. But thank you for the vote of confidence. Grateful. I see nothing else from the council. Any questions, comments from the public? Mr. Gross.
Good afternoon, Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. 457 is not the same as a 403B. Can, can a town employee do both?
Isn't the 403B on the education side?
Yes. Can a town, can an educator do both? Are they entitled to the 457s?
I didn't hear the question. What was the question?
Who in town can do a 457? Who, who's eligible to do a 457 in town? Because they're not the same as a 403B.
Hey, 457 is an IRS code that covers, I believe, local and perhaps state employees. It, it, it does not cover teachers, and that's one of the vagaries of the IRS code. Obviously, teachers are employees of local or state government, but they have, they have a, a separate provision. But 457, as far as I'm concerned, is limited to government employees.
So, town employees can do it?
That's correct.
And so, can they do a 403 also?
No, not to my knowledge. I think they're restricted to 457s.
I'm confused on that one, because I, I'm, and this, Mr. Hutten, personnel, I mean-
Well, let's see who can answer your question when it comes out.
Okay. The question is, can you do, why can't you do a 403B? What is, so you have certain employees that you're hiring now, and you're offering them, if you're trying to get them out of the pension plan, what are you offering them in place of the pension plan?
This, this, this is not offered as an option. A, a person doesn't have to be in the pension plan, then, then they're on social security. So, we don't offer a different plan for the pension. The 457 is entirely an individual's deferment of income, and they invest that. It's a deferment of income from taxes, so then your tax will ultimately receive the money after you retire. But-
Right. It's fully taxable.
It's, we don't offer it as an option against pension.
I'm not, that's not what I'm saying. What I'm saying is, you were looking previously to move people out of the pension, new hires potentially out of pensions. Is a 403 a vehicle that you're using or going to try and use? Because 457s fueled, fueled solely discretionary.
Well, 457 isn't even in this conversation. Jim, exactly, do you know what a 403B is?
No, but I think your question, Mr. Gross, is that, are we looking to remove people from the pension plan?
No.
Put them in a 457 plan?
Mr. Chairman, I can answer the question, if you'd like. The 4, the 403B is a retirement account for employees of public school and tax-exempt organizations. Participants can include teachers, school administrators, professors, government employees, nurses, doctors, and librarians.
Right.
So, that's, that's the definition of, of that.
Right. So, and I am, I'm fully aware that a 403B can be a person in town here, as can be a 457. What I'm asking is, are you offering both?
They, they get offered-
457.
Yeah, they get offered to different classes of employees. The 457 is the public employees here on town government. The 403B is for education employees.
45, well, all right. So, you're telling me that there's no 40, so 403Bs, town employees don't have a 403B in town here?
That's correct.
So, you're, so earlier on in the conversation, you were saying that this agency that you had come in to look at Nationwide, who's been your administrator for how many years now?
I don't know. It's before my time. I've been here almost eighteen years.
Right. And has, have you ever seen it go out to bid?
No.
Okay. And when this Sage or whatever their name was came in, they said that they were being overcharged. I would be upset if I was an employee, because that was my money that they were taking, percentage-wise. This is why you need to go out to bid. This is why you need to have, mix it up, whether it's this department pension or, or for auditors. These are controlling money. You need to go out to bid on these. If this company, which is a small company, probably, correct, Sage, I don't know who they are. Are they from Connecticut or New York?
No, they're from Massachusetts.
Massachusetts. So, smaller company, they found this. We should, the town should have been looking at this all the time. And my question is, on the due diligence part of it, that you're talking about, Nationwide just offers, because you're saying you need to have somebody. Nationwide just offers, 457s are unique. They're different than 403Bs or 401Ks. They're limited in what they can offer. So, you're saying that you, that this company reviews their offerings and says they're good or they're bad? Is that, I don't understand what they do then.
I think I explained that previously. They look at the investment options that Nationwide offers employees to put their deferred income in, and then they either add or subtract from that menu.
Because a lot of companies, this goes back to why a company like BlackRock, Fidelity, or any of the big boys for pension and so forth, they can offer tremendous amount or wide array of offerings, as they can for the 457. Nationwide's a small bit player, and I would hope that you would go out to bid on many of these things. It's really needed, and the review that Mr. Testa said is really needed. Thank you.
Anyone else?
Bruce Conroy, Burkhead Drive. I understand that. This, it probably has to get done, because this is how we, how we have been managing things, and how we have been overs, we did our oversight. The thing is that, with all due respect, the most important job in the town government is the one that's not filled. From the public's perspective, perhaps it's a fire chief or the police chief. From town government's perspective, it's the comptroller. So, now, everything is left undone, and we have to do these continuations until the position's filled and the person gets comfortable. So, I think that's the real problem. The real problem is that we knew he was leaving. We hoped he wouldn't. Hope doesn't, hope doesn't fill a job. Hope doesn't get the job done. It should have, we should have had it already out. We should have had people, applicants, done before he left, before his projected date to leave. We should have had a slate of, of participants, of, uh, of people up for that position, and we didn't. So, it's a failure, in my opinion. I'm just a carpenter, I know. It's all I do. I, I work with my hands every day. But uh, the real thing here is that, even I know, that is the most important job in this government, and it was un, left unfilled, and no one asked why. So, anyway, I, I'm pretty sure you probably should go ahead and pass this bid. But uh, really, we fell down on the job. That is the most important job, because without the comptroller, those other jobs don't get filled. The budget doesn't get passed. Doesn't, nothing gets done. So, we fell down on the job, and I'm sure we have a great person coming up. But uh, it's not a joke. It's not funny. This, it is the most important job, and we failed. So, that's just my opinion, and unfortunately, I got to run to work. But you all have a great night.
Anyone else? There being none, Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll? No.
Laffin.
Yes.
Marone.
Yes.
Morganstein.
No.
Chortel.
Yes.
Tada.
No.
Testa.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Servoni.
Motion passes. Yes. Sorry. Called that out of order. That's it for the items removed from the consent agenda, onto the public question and answer period.
Wow.
Is that Mr. Commerford?
Bill Commerford, 5 Broadview Drive. The mayor, he's in a huddle. Mayor, um, do we have a treasurer as of now?
Not at this time, no.
Okay. And how long has that position been vacated?
About four years.
Okay, four years. And are you still looking?
It's an open position, but it will have to go down in the, the order. It's in the budget. It will get filled. It's supposed to get filled. But there should be, if I get promoted, then the deputy comptroller's going to have to get filled, and the treasurer can get filled.
Okay. But I think the charter says that we're supposed to have one by charter. It's been four years. We're looking, but yet you approved four separate years' budgets, and that position has still been left unoccupied. Is that, that, that's the case, Mayor?
There was, it was posted. It was filled. There was interviews, and nobody was chosen at one point.
Okay. So, we're, is it, is it posted today? I can go out there and see that, that it's his town treasurer.
No, it is not posted right now.
And, and these questions actually are directed toward the mayor. Tim, I appreciate it. Why is it not posted, Mayor?
As Tim Senna has just stated, we, we need to choose a comptroller. The comptroller should be choosing a, a treasurer. My understanding was that there were several efforts at choosing a treasurer, and we did not find a suitable candidate.
And you're comfortable with all that?
I am not comfortable in the sense that I like to have openings. However, I would not want to have a candidate chosen who's not going to provide us with the expertise and capabilities we need just to fill a position. So, I'm comfortable in that sense. They, they have indicated to me that they have not found someone suitable, and the duties have been performed, but we don't have someone in that separate position, and nor do we want someone there who can't do the job.
Okay. And I don't want to overrun my three minutes. My next question is, is the animal shelter. Does that fall under the purview of Public Works as far as inspection, maintenance, and upkeep?
The facility itself is, is the responsibility of Public Works.
Okay. So, the thing that I don't understand is, as far as this air conditioning and heating goes, why wouldn't that be coming out of Public Works' budget?
It could. However, there are funds available in the trust fund, but it certainly could come out of the Public Works' budget.
Okay. So, if that funds weren't available, which I don't believe should be taken, because in my opinion, that wasn't the intent of the bequest, the fact of the matter is, is that it could and it should? That's to you, Mayor. In other, in other words, Public Works was supposed to be doing inspections, right? And I think I watched last time-
No, that, that, that's not correct. Public Works does not do inspections.
So, who does?
Public Works, Public Works provides the service that maintains, repairs, constructs, deconstructs, whatever is necessary with the facility. But Public Works depends upon the animal control officer and that office to indicate to them what is needed, what problems there might be, et cetera. So, Public Works does not inspect the facility, no.
Okay. So, my final question, I appreciate your indulgence, Mr. Chairman Servoni. Some time ago, the town used to have what was called a building advisory committee. You're familiar with that, Mayor. You were the mayor at the time. Why did that dissolve?
I'm not aware of a building advisory committee. There, there is a, a, a board that oversees complaints with regard to the building department, but I'm not aware of a building advisory committee.
Um, let me refresh your memory real quick. There was some problems when Henry McCully used to be the director of Public Works, and it got to the point where the town council was livid. It's down at the town clerk's vault, as far as the minutes go. It's readily available. They had no choice. It was Simpson School. It was the railroad. It was the senior center. There was a whole litany of them. And they got to the point where they did their own in, uh, team, this advisory committee, and they, the town council held Henry McCully's feet to the fire, because all these things were happening. They said, we own all these properties, but nobody inspects them. And that, and that these people made all these complaints to your office, and there was nowhere to turn, so the council ended up doing it. And that was the only time, in my opinion, these things were aired out and fixed. And then, all of a sudden, this committee, which I thought was an asset to the town, dissolved. My question is, is, it clearly seems that we should be resurrecting this. And I see, I, I'm sure that I'm over the limits. I'm hopeful that you guys take that. I'll, I'll submit this information at the next town council meeting. Thank you.
Sir, your name and address for the record, please?
Yes. Alexander Roy Hance, Ahmed, Anna Mohammedan Ali, 22 Whining Brook Lane, Wallingford, Connecticut, 06492. I'm here just to question a couple things. We said you hired, or, no, excuse me, you said you hired a new dog watcher or someone at the shelter. Is that correct, personally?
There's a new animal control officer.
Okay. I have called the animal shelter, right? I made them aware of the broken glass in the dog park. I don't know if he made you aware personally. Hold on, let me finish, please. There is broken glass from beer bottles in the dog park. I was there for the first time after three years never going there. Okay? Now, I have a video and witnesses at the park who are there at the time in question, which I did ask them permission to bring them accountable, to verify of the claim. And I showed them the video, or we can show them another time, as well as I called the shelter to ask them who cleans up the dog park, because I found very little supplies there, water with no fountain, and I know that's a different issue. But then they said, oh, we have volunteers who go to the park. Now, if there's glass, right, and we can age it, I, I, no problem. I bagged it. I tagged it. There's other glass there. I didn't touch it, just to make sure that I didn't have my fingerprints on it. Now, he said that there's a volunteer service, but couldn't provide me a number at all, and then disregarded my claim and just hung up the phone. Is there anything that you can say to this about this person that you personally hired for the shelter?
Well, the town hired them. I'm part of that process of hiring. That's correct.
Okay.
However, they also are correct, the dog park is not, is not a public works facility, and it is not, it is not over- and it is not overseen by the animal control officer. The dog park does have a group of volunteers who are responsible to clean up. They provide, the trash bags refuse to be removed, Public Works then removes it. But that facility has always been the responsibility of a volunteer group that raised money, implemented all of that program.
Sir, I'm going to stop you right there. A volunteer.
Well, you should really let him finish.
Well, no, how about this?
How about having some manners?
Manners, sir? We have dogs, right? We just advocated for an AC.
He's explaining to you.
He's explaining to me the split housing and no joint representation for the town. We are dividing the town through what we call fascism, which is non-splitting of revenue. We're talking about a comptroller. We're talking about how to disregard people and individuals in the citizens, because we're all individuals in the town. Now, if you provide services that are volunteer, I can say, "Hey, I don't want to go to work today." Like some of the chairheads, if they're on vacation and you don't want to participate, or you get a little Zoom call saying, "Yes, I came in today." So I'm just being an attendant to the attendees of what it is, the dog freedom, or what we call sharing and caring, like puppies with wheels. Or if an animal, which I have called about stray dogs, and I got no call back, right? But then, when I called them and I left them a phone number to call back, they just didn't call. So that's their job, is to call back for someone to reach out to. Now, I know I've called the police department too, which is the next step. So what is the man doing from wake up to 1:00 P.M.? Scouring the town, looking for whatever he could find? Or is that another dog roaming the area that never got picked up? But you wouldn't know, because you leave the job, not you, but the association of the owners of the town get to choose the freedom of the people. So if there's no public identification for the actual, let's call it the recognition or the deference of who gets what? Because like we said, it's a volunteer. People volunteer for the open positions. We go on a credibility. I'm finding lack of credibility for a lot of the things within the town. Now, I don't have to appease it. I can actually represent myself and try and emancipate the freedom for what? The unspoken. Because we take care of the dogs as we bring them to the park. So who then would we go to to pay for my dog chewing on glass? Do I get to sue the town?
No, you wouldn't sue the town.
No?
No.
No?
You can choose not to take your dog there if you feel that it's unsafe.
But it's a town park. Why would I not be able to take, where am I supposed to bring my dog?
If the park is not maintained properly by the organization that agreed to maintain it, then the park will be closed.
The park will be closed?
The park will not remain open.
Dogs? Well, shouldn't we have an honorary person who gets paid to go there to clean it up, like dog poop service? No?
No, this was all conditioned upon the volunteers agreeing that they would maintain the park, and Public Works would assist in removing the trash that was collected at the end of whatever, each day or each week or whatever.
Each year, maybe?
So the town has had no oversight or responsibility for the maintenance of the dog park.
But you hire the person to oversee it, or you?
No, we don't.
You just said that the Public Works is supposed to be in cahoots.
The Public Works Department has nothing to do with the operation of the dog park.
The Public Works just said the hired of the trusted appointees of the volunteers is dealt through the Public Works, and now you just counteracted what you said.
No, Public Works deals with the facility, the dog shelter. Our animal shelter is maintained as a facility with the coordination between the animal control officer and the Public Works Department. Neither one has any authority over the dog park.
Then shouldn't we have authority over the dog park?
No, because when the dog park was initiated and installed, those who were interested in its maintenance and the availability of it agreed that they would do the maintaining of the dog park. And it was very clear that at the point they no longer wanted to do that, the dog park would close.
So is that what we want, closing of the dog park for the lack?
I don't want that, but you're asking who has supervision, and the town does not.
I'm questioning the lack of the insubordination or the majority holders of what goes into the town surplus to maybe revamp, revive, what?
Mr. Hens, I'm going to interrupt you right there. You've had twice the time that is allotted per individual.
I was three minutes.
I just want to, you're at seven minutes.
Seven minutes? I've been speaking for seven minutes?
Yes, you have. And I just want to have an understanding as to whether or not there's anybody else who wants to take a bite at this public question and answer period before I let you go on.
No, that's fine. I'll be here with more questions and more facts next time. Thank you. That's all.
Mr. Gross.
Bob Gross, Long Hill Road. Through the chair to the mayor. I saw an article in the paper about you have the federal relief funds to help businesses and people and municipalities out. And then it said that you probably aren't going to start dispersing money until next year at some point.
I couldn't tell what you said at the end there.
You said that you were going to, it said that you probably were not going to start dispersing, spending money until next year, 2022.
I think, I don't recall the exact conversation, but we are in the process of trying to hire someone to, an entity, organization, individuals, whatever. We have a bid, and we need the expertise of those who can inform us about the record-keeping for the whole program. I would expect that between bringing someone on board and them advising us, we might not have actual decision-making occur, perhaps until the beginning of 2022. But could it happen quicker? You know, maybe it will. But at this point, I'm guessing.
Wouldn't it be wise? I see other, I don't know what CCM can do for you or whatever that group is. But I see other communities have seen needs that are there now, such as renters assistance. I'm not saying that the town pays the renters assistance, but helps, hires somebody or helps people through the process. There's a lot of money sitting at the state that can help renters, people from, because now the more, you know, they can be expelled from their homes, those types of things. Why are we waiting months when these are things that are really urgent for people right now?
Well, first of all, we're not eligible for some of the funds that the more urban areas receive. What I'm talking about are the American Rescue Plan Act funds, ARPA funds. And they are strictly controlled as far as what they can be spent on. It has to, in general, be COVID-related financial losses. The only area of expenditure that is beyond that would be infrastructure, which would be water sewer. But otherwise, it has to be COVID-related. That is a program that stands alone. I am not aware of any other funds that the town is eligible for that allow us to be providing for losses suffered because of COVID.
Okay, that brings you to a couple of things, one is, one is you saw Southington is hiring three firefighters because they have a grant writer. So if we had a grant writer, maybe we would know of more of these things. But getting back, if a person doesn't have money to pay rent, most of that is COVID-related because of the economy. Towns are dispersing money that way. The state has money. And you left off one thing. You said water sewer. There was a third thing that the feds were allowing you to spend money on is called the internet.
It's a broadband.
Exactly. Something that the town is very much lacking. And if we have, and as you mentioned, we're not out of the COVID situation at this particular point in time. Who knows what it's going to be like this winter? Wouldn't it be wise to take some of that money now and get town hall? And where people are working in the town, and I'm not speaking for the town clerk, but the town clerk's office, assessor's office, et cetera, wouldn't it be wise to get them? So if we had a lockdown again, they would be able to do their functions without stepping foot into town hall? Or at least the citizens wouldn't have to come in and put them at risk? I think those are ways that, and I'm not saying you shouldn't help out businesses either, but there are many, you said there's over $13 million and potentially more coming. Some of that money should be spent right here in this building. Thank you.
Anyone else? Seeing none, I close the public question and answer period. We had a late request and had been asked to waive Rule 5.
Mr. Chairman, I move we waive Rule 5 for the purposes of considering and possibly acting on a transfer of funds for the purchase of fireproof cabinets for the registrars of voters' office.
Second. Moved and seconded. I see a registrar. Dare you come and sit with us and explain to us what this request is about? I mean, what I got from the memo is that you're trying to comply with Secretary of the State's requirement. Well, this is just the motion to amend the agenda. Is there any discussion on the council regarding the motion to amend the agenda? There being none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? There being none, we now have a new agenda item. We have a motion?
Yes, I move we approve a transfer of funds from the regular salaries account to the capital equipment account for $14,420 for the purchase of fireproof filing cabinets.
Second. Moved and seconded. Good evening, Mr. Avery.
We are required to keep all of our files in fireproof cabinets. And now we have more files than we have cabinets to put them into. So that's why we need these cabinets.
And am I correct to understand that this has become time-sensitive?
Yes, we should have done this a long time ago. And now we need to get them in here and get the state off our backs for, we have to follow the law and do what we're supposed to do.
Have we experienced an increase in paper activity since we've been voting with the COVID around us?
No, I wouldn't think so. It's just we've got 28,000 voters in Wallingford. And we have several thousand inactive voters and several thousand off voters. And all those files have to be in fireproof cabinets. And we've got so many files, we started putting them in other cabinets, and we're not supposed to do that.
Okay, well, hopefully we can fix that for you tonight. Counselor Morganstein.
Thank you. Hi, Robert. So am I correct that there is a necessity to have a physical paper copy? Or if people had scanned documents, would that be acceptable? Is this truly a paper issue in any town?
No, they have to be paper documents.
The original is the paper, yeah. And so, yeah, always when you see waive Rule 5, of course, we go, you know, you said it right out. We have known about this. Has this request been made previously and it's been turned down? Or it really was overlooked somewhere?
No, there was some question as to where the money would come from. And now what we've done is we're taking it from another part of our budget and moving it, rather than asking for new money to cover these cabinets.
So when you say we've known for a while, did we know at this past budget season that this was something that we needed? And we were just kicking it case for a can down the road?
No, because some of the files that we have in storage, we were not aware of, that they had to be also in fireproof cabinets.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, I might call the question. I'm going to move a motion and a second to call the question, which stops discussion on the item. Is there a discussion on the motion to call the question? Well, there's no, we can't have further discussion on the item itself. So we'll have a roll call vote, and I'm calling the question.
Okay, Fishbein.
No.
Laffin.
No.
Moreau.
Yes.
Morgenstein.
No.
Chortel.
Absolutely.
Tada.
No.
Testa.
You don't leave.
Zandry.
Yes.
Chairman Sivoni.
I vote yes, but it doesn't pass. So Counselor Fishbein.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Bob, I didn't recognize you out there, without the mustache. Nice to see you. How many file cabinets are you looking for?
Three.
Three?
Three or four.
And are they letter size or legal size?
Oh, they're for cards.
They're for card?
They're regular file cabinet. It's a special-made file cabinet for six by eight cards.
So how tall is it?
The cabinets?
Yeah.
They're regular file, they're regular. They're six.
So it's like six inches wide and six feet tall?
No, there's two rows per drawer. So the cabinets are this wide and standard height.
Okay. Only because, I mean, you're spending, how much, $14,000, $17,000?
Yeah, they're $4,000 or something.
I've got fireproof cabinets. I mean, that.
Purchasing went out and solicited this from eight or nine different vendors.
Yeah?
So Louis didn't pick it out. This is something that purchasing did their job and came up with a price for these cabinets.
They buying them new or used?
Brand new.
Why?
I wouldn't know where you'd find a used one. And I don't think purchasing would know where to find a used one. A very specialized cabinet.
I understand, but, I don't know, file cabinet, a desk, it's government. I don't know why you need to, so you're telling me they didn't even look for, you know, Bristol Myers went out of town. That's how we got all these chairs, right? They're used. They look great. Saved us a lot of money.
We turned it over to purchasing, and this is what they came back with.
I know it's not you. I know. It's just a lot of money, so. But thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Certainly. I don't see anything else in the council, any questions or comments from the public? Sure.
So they're about $4,000?
You're just, I know you already identified yourself.
22 Wining Brook Lane, Wallingford, Connecticut, 06492, Alexander Roy Hens, Ahmed Ana Mohammedan Ali. So they're about $4,000 for a cabinet. You need three of them, correct? Just understanding. So around $15,000, give or take, transfer, getting over here, surplus. And then what happens when we realize we need more? Because we didn't archive all the documents in, say, scanner or computer or on a floppy disk or a C drive or any other way in a now era of modern man and non-APEC. Meaning just, like you said, a desk that's fireproof, walls that are fireproof. We have fire extinguishers, fireproof blankets. Can't wrap a cabinet in a blanket that's fireproof? And just remove the blanket, take out what we need? Because then after those three are bought, who's to say we don't need another two? But now we need a fireproof trash can. Just if a paper catches on fire, we throw it in the trash, right? The question is, is it going to stop at three? $15,000 now, $15,000 the next time? We know when they come in and you know you have more papers?
If we have more voters and we need more cabinets, we'll have to buy more cabinets.
So, Mr. Avery, you need to talk to the microphone. What you said was, if we have more voters, we'll have more cards, we'll need more cabinets.
Yes.
Thank you. So $15,000 for fireproof cabinets, and then if there's more cabinets we need, it's another, instead, $20,000? And we just had the issue of getting $20,000, $28,000 for a fiscal pension for the town of the all-state, as he was saying. So I mean, I understand it's a different bid, but I'm just questioning, as we said, the comptroller. the comptroller and the idea of the association for, I guess we can call it, a rounded table of e-commerce, like a charter. But I don't understand why we need them now and we didn't need them last year or two years ago when it would have been implemented or should have been.
Mr. Avery, did you take into account the foreseeable future?
Yes, there... Yes.
Thank you.
We don't think we'll be buying cabinets for quite a while.
Thank you.
All right, so then I'm going to leave it with what's then the reason we need them now? That's it.
Thank you. Anyone else? Madam Clerk, would you please call the roll?
Fishbein.
No.
Laffin.
Yes.
Morone.
Yes.
Morganstein.
Yes.
Chortel.
Yes.
Tada.
Yes.
Zandry.
Yes.
And Chairman Cervoni.
Yes, the motion passes. Thank you, Mr. Avery. Onto Item 6, an update on the air conditioning and the animal shelter. Mayor, I think you're going to field this one.
Yes, the status is that Purchasing has specifications for a public bid and will be looking for a firm to do the air conditioning and ancillary work necessary at the animal control shelter.
Thank you. Counselor Chortel, this is your item requested at the last time we were all sitting here. So Counselor Chortel, nothing. Counselor Testa had to step away. Counselor Morganstein.
Yes, I think the leftover comment or question that I have from this whole situation, which has gone on far too long and seemed to a lot in the public like it could have been expedited, is who we're talking to about this tonight. You returned a phone call that I had made a week and a half or so ago and made it very clear that the animal control officer would not be invited to our meetings. In all the time that I was part of the public and now as I'm here as a counselor, typically if we request that someone heading a department give us information, we get that person. And of course, it's, as I've found out, up to you whether that is granted or not. He certainly has walked into a pretty volatile situation. So if we're protecting an employee, maybe that's one thing. But the answer that I got was he's just much too busy to come and be part of a meeting. I'm sure he is very busy. A phone call that I placed to him, just like Mr. Hens, was not returned. And I gave him the benefit of the doubt because I think he is much too busy because we have not seen come before us any requests to adjust the salary or the requirements for his staff. People are being asked to have an on-call situation at, I believe, is it a $12-an-hour position? We have a lot of empty positions in many departments and this one, it has really come to the forefront of the public, how empty it is. And I'm sure that he's handling night and day the lives of our animals. And we've had our hot days and we're still without air conditioning. And we've put together the two departments, Public Works and Animal Control, have gone through your process, doing it methodically, doing it the way we do it, even though we have the jewel fund, even all of it. I think most people in the room and watching know what's happened. I, for one, would like to meet our new animal control officer and ask him what he needs for help and whether we should be having any adjustments in order to get him that help. And then I do have a question. So an inspection was done almost three months ago. I believe September 25th is a date that we may well be coming up against another inspection of the facility. We were found separate from the air conditioning to have many building problems in this building. Do we feel like if an inspector comes in here September 25th, we have gotten work done? Or we're just getting that undertaken now and we run the risk of not being up to code?
I believe Mr. Biggs's memo indicated that the resurfacing, cracks and fissures, was the concern about them being able to... Cracks and fissures in floors or wall could harbor bacteria. So we need that work to be performed, and that was also part of the bidding that would be required. And I believe that Mr. Biggs put that in the memo that I believe you all have a copy of.
Is it Mr. Gibbs or Mr. Biggs?
Mr. Gibbs.
Mr. Gibbs. So Mr. Gibbs is telling us these things and we're coming up to a date where the state may well be coming back and we're really just at a point where we know these things and we're looking to do these things as opposed to any of these things work started? What's today, the 15th, 14th?
And we're progressing with that, but we need a firm to do it. It's not something that's simple. And the Public Works and Mr. Gibbs have worked on coming up with specifications that will allow that work to be completed.
So do we think that we'll be getting a fine for having had our three months and not fulfilling this?
Well, we... It's not like we have done nothing. We are working toward the solution of it, and it's taken longer than we'd like to have happen, but that's where the matter stands.
So I work in a healthcare facility, and when the state comes and inspects us and says you need to do X, Y, and Z, every hand is on deck to make sure that when the state comes back, X, Y, and Z is fixed. I'm just going to leave it there. I am... Yeah, thank you.
Anyone else on the council? Members of the public?
Yes, Alexander Roy Hens, 22 Whining Brook Lane, Wallingford, Connecticut. As you know, I've spoken three times thus far. So we're dealing about an AC unit. If it hasn't started, can I just ask exactly how this man received training? Is he an actual police dog himself? Or is he just, like we said, having too much time?
Did you ask if the animal control officer is a police dog?
Well, that's what I tried to understand because apparently he tells people to call the police department if he can't work or we have to call the police department to get the animals picked up. I asked if he knows any training because it's a shelter and now we have an animal catcher. So as I said, he didn't want to go to the park. He left it up to the park volunteers. And now the AC that we got approved, is he monitoring the AC? Or is there something... Are there too many animals in there for it to not get done? Is he training the animals, something? I'm trying to understand his position.
Mayor, if you understood the question, you can do your best to answer it.
Mr. Gibbs has the appropriate credentials, certifications necessary to be an animal control officer. He's worked in several other municipalities. He's familiar with Wallingford because at one time he worked part-time here. So he has the credentials to do the work. He's a licensed animal control officer.
So he's an officer, you're saying, correct?
That's what the title of the position is.
So he can train the animals?
He doesn't train the animals. He's in charge of the animal control shelter, the care, the feeding, the responsibilities involving rabid animals or injured animals. He has that training and has had experience with it.
So is he a doctor?
No, he's not a doctor.
So he can take care of wounded animals, you're saying, verbatim? You just said that.
No, I didn't say he would take care. He knows how to respond if there's an animal that is into stress. And typically, they would take the animal to a veterinarian, but he knows the appropriate response that would be necessary given the situation.
So as I just brought up about the dog park and the volunteers not doing their job, I couldn't really put them under a citizen's arrest. I can only go to the shelter. Now, the shelter told me to call the volunteers, but again, excuse me, I apologize, I make mistakes sometimes. I'm able to admit that. I want to recognize the training. As you said, he worked for the town. You said once. Then he left and then had multiple jobs. So clearly, he must have some veterinary or zoology, so to speak, about animal care, feeding, as well as training, you would have to say then. Because how would you then take a dog off the street if you don't have training to train the dog unless you're scared of the dogs? Because as I said, he hasn't returned my call about the one that I said was on Ward Street by the churches.
Animal control officer does not train animals. It's not part of his work at all.
Have you ever seen him rope an animal or recall a time where he's suspended his bench at the actual shelter to go on a call to help out a stray? Have you seen him capture an animal with your own eyes?
No, I have not observed that.
Nothing further.
Okay. Name an address for the record, please.
Riley O'Connell, Blossom Lane. I was just wondering if we have a timeline yet for when we think this bid will potentially go out? I mean, an estimate, obviously.
I believe... I don't know if it has gone out. The specifications are with Purchasing, and Purchasing publishes the public bid and the responses follow that.
And my only other question was quickly, can you confirm whether or not there was a local Wallingford business that offered to do this project for free of charge, you know, months earlier in this process?
I believe there was a business that offered to do it and lacking our specifications. And at that point, we did not have Public Works ready to move on the project. So without specifications, we are not able to direct anyone to do the work. We need to have specifications so that we can hold whoever does the work to the proper standards. And hence, a public bid allows anyone to participate. So if a business wants to participate, they can participate. And if their cost is zero because they want to do it for free, they're free to participate that way. But we need specifications to indicate what the specific work is and what we expect to be done.
Okay, great. Sorry, and I do have one last question. I did forget about this one, but just... And I know Counselor Morganstein brought this up a little bit previously, but is there a plan in the near future to review what we're offering in terms of salary and in terms of benefits to get more people to apply?
Apparently, you need to get closer to the mic.
Oh, sorry. Bring it up a little bit. Basically, it's to adjust the salaries and benefits to attract more people to apply for the Assistant Animal Control Officer positions. Because when we first brought this up, I think three or three and a half months ago, you said you believe they had nine applications currently. But I don't believe any of them, or maybe perhaps one part-time position is filled, but most of them are still vacant. And again, with the police chief... Or not, sorry, not the police chief, but the police officer who was operating at the animal shelter, we didn't have a head animal control officer, said in their report that he believed it was basically impossible for us to attract folks given what we were offering with the restrictions.
Well, I can't speak to those pronouncements, but I do know, I was told by Mr. Gibbs that we have two offers out, we do background checks, et cetera. We're hoping to have hirings in the near future. If that doesn't occur, I have had conversations with him to think about what the staffing should be if we're not able to continue with the current staffing standard, which is two full-time and three part-time. If that's not possible, I've asked him to think about what he thinks would be the appropriate staffing should we go in a different direction.
All right, thank you. Thank you. I think we're going to address a technical issue.
Hi, Holly Fontaine. I'm from Vernon, 35 Elizabeth Lane. I'm with Desmond's Army Animal Law Advocacy Group, and I attend all the animal abuse cases in Connecticut. Our group does. So my question, you did approve the AC and heating to be done?
We have approved a... A bid is going out. We're supportive of having the work performed. We need to receive responses to the bid.
But you're going to allow it?
Yes. I mean, we wouldn't put the bid out if we weren't intending to award it.
I just wanted to make sure. The deadline for the 25th of this month, if the state doesn't okay that enough was done, will the animals be moved? What will happen? Will it get shut down? What happens?
Well, we are not violating the state's standards right now. So the state's standards are being complied with. This will improve the conditions there to have air conditioning, but we're not violating conditions now.
No, I'm talking... I'm sorry. Maybe I confused. The... When the Department of Agriculture, Animal Control Division came in on June 25th, you had till September 25th to make the changes, including the temperature not exceeding 90 degrees on hot days when there's animals in there and all the other structural problems. So if it's not done, do you... Will the... If they come in and say this isn't enough, you didn't do enough, you had three months, will the... Where will the animals go? What is the plan?
Well, we'll deal with that should it occur, but at this point, we are moving toward a compliance. And we fully expect that there will be a full compliance. Where we're not in compliance with the state inspection is the resurfacing of cracks, walls, and floor. That was the only thing they found that needed repair to meet the state's standards, and we are moving forward to do that.
But there's no plan in effect to actually get it completed?
Well, yes, the plan is we will award a bid and the work will be done and it will be finished.
Okay, well, I used to tell my nursing staff, because I'm a retired head nurse for the state, that if we're planning on our part, because I never just let it fall on the nurses under me, I included myself as a supervisor, as a head nurse, if we're planning on our part, doesn't constitute an emergency on anyone else's. So I would hope, because these are lives, these dogs, and you have people in your town and outside of your town that are watching and paying attention, including myself and Desmond's Army. And I just hope that, you know, it's really being taken seriously because this is the second meeting I've come to, and it just seems like it's bounced around just to, I don't know, waste time, play games? I just... I can't understand it, just like I can't understand animal abuse.
I can assure you, we do not bounce around and we don't waste time. There's more than enough to keep us busy and we are dedicated to doing what is appropriate, justifications for what we do. And at this point, as I stated, there's a bid document that will hopefully receive public award in the near future and the work will be completed.
So hopefully, by the next meeting then, we should have some progress on...
I would hope so, yes.
I would too. Thank you.
Anyone else? All right. Moving along to Item 7, discussion regarding Wallingford Police Department Facebook page, requested by Counselors Zandry and Fishbein. Welcome. If you could remind us who you are for the record, please.
Good evening, counsel. John Ventura, Police Chief.
Anthony DeMaio, Deputy Police Chief.
You can just move that microphone over.
I didn't call this one, so...
You just wait. You're just waiting to see what you have to respond to. Well, Councilor Zandry, I'm going out of alphabetical order and letting you go first.
All right, great. Thank you very much. Chief Officer Ventura, I mean, I asked for this item because I had gotten a number of people that had reached out to me about communications that come from the police department. I had identified that a lot of times you guys put press releases out. We get them on the council. A lot of times, myself and Councilor Fishmine will post them out on Facebook so that we get the communication out. And the add-on conversations that I would get from people is, why can't we have a Facebook page? And I kind of explained that that has to be something that's adopted administratively beyond the police department. It has to be something that the town wants to do from the administration down. And I thought this might be a good venue to kind of bring it, bring to the attention of everybody to get your feedback, whether you think that's something that the department could handle. Just because other towns do it, you know, you may have a different mindset on how you want to handle the communication. But I wanted to kind of open up the dialogue. I've taken a look at Meriden's page, Cheshire's page. And I've gotten a good feel for some of the information that gets put out there. And some of the larger items are like the press releases that you guys do. And some of them are smaller things, like reminders about, like in the wintertime, about, you know, parking on the streets. And I know that oftentimes when we talk about leveraging a technology, there's always the concern from the administration about, you know, overlap or redundancy of work and efforts. And because I'm pretty supportive of this, I kind of want to outline the fact that I don't think there'd be as much overlap as it might seem. I understand that when we put, like as the example, parking bans in place, put up on the town webpage. But, and people do get used to being directed and going there, but that also is an exercise. You guys have to commit, it's going to be a storm of a certain size, get the information to them. They have to update the Facebook, the website for that. And that's a series of work right there. And then, of course, people have to be reminded to go there because they don't look. Where something like a page on Facebook, which is a very heavily utilized social medium for Wallingford, many other towns as well, this thing ends up in people's feeds. It ends up being shared by other people, and I think it's a good mechanism to utilize. So I wanted to introduce the topic to kind of discuss it, see what your thoughts were. If anybody from the public that contacted me, I told them, we'll put the item on and discuss it, see if they had any input. And then kind of get the feelings of maybe where the administration might be. But I really would like to start with the department and your thoughts. If you kind of tell us, look, it's too much, or we can't do it, then, you know, we won't push it, champion it, or whatever it might be. But if you think there's merit to it, and something you might want to follow up on, then we can maybe add to the conversation. So I mean, I know that was a little bit more of a longer intro than maybe you were ready for. But I wanted to kind of get an understanding of where this came from. Because I really didn't call anybody at the department to discuss it.
Right. And I think that most importantly, when you look at the police department, what do you need? You need communication with, you know, the community. So, you know, I do think press releases are a little time-consuming. It takes the time to write the press release out, and you have to email it and hope that someone runs it. So, you know, if we need rapid communication, the press release is really not something that we need to utilize. I am not opposed to social media. I think that social media can be a great tool if used correctly. We have a public information officer. He probably would be in charge of that portion of it, the social media portion. There are good things that can be done, you know, programs, parking bans. If there is an accident, we need to reroute traffic to put that out there so people could avoid the area. So there are, you know, very positive things. There's also things that you need to take into account as far as FOI requirements, as far as posting things. If there's a post that we put up there, that, do we put comments up there? Is there stipulation for comments? So we would need some training for the agency. I do know that other surrounding agencies does have a Facebook page. I've spoken to the mayor. I know his feelings on that. He has given me permission, in speaking to him as a consolidation, to upgrade the .gov Wallingford post. Because right now, all it has is a couple of forms and some phone numbers. There's really nothing else there. But whatever we get, I think is better than what we have. We need a mechanism to put some more information out. We have a lot of programs that we plan on putting out. We have a lot of partnerships that we're forming with a lot of different agencies. So there needs to be some sort of median to get that information out besides the press release. So anything where communication can rapidly get out to the public, so you know what we're doing, is a benefit.
And I'd like to add, add to some of that if I might real quick. So I mean, and I agree with you. There's also what I would call information fatigue too. Like if we use the autodilers for like, you know, when it's a critical issue with storm or loss of power, or you know, like with one of the tropical storms that comes through, that's different. We really should be using the phone systems like we do to kind of notify everybody. The nice thing about these types of notifications and messaging in the feeds is that you read it real quick and you know if it has nothing to do with you, it's maybe setting up a new crossing in Yalesville. Well, I might not read that because I'm not over there that much, so I can kind of bypass it. To your point about comments, I'm only speaking from the aspect of running some of the groups. You would have to look into it like you mentioned about how you want to address or handle comments. If it's permitted, again, because you're, you know, you'd be setting up an agency page, which is different than maybe something I might run. You can always, again, once again, kind of stressing if it's permitted, not allow comments so that you're not dealing with the back and the forth. Because that can get very tedious. That can be problematic too if someone's got. And it's not, it's not an effort to squelch comments or input. Just, you know, you might put as part of the page that you're not going to allow for a lot of interactivity if there's a problem. You know, you could call the traffic division, you could call, you know, parking. You can call the different divisions at the department if you need to follow up so that there's not a lot of true monitoring on the page. I'm sure you'd much rather have it being in an announcement mechanism rather than an interactive type thing, which would consume time, which is one of the things we're trying to avoid. So, I mean, I think that makes the most sense. I didn't really have much additional. I kind of wanted to defer back to the chairman in case Councilor Fishmine or anybody else had any input that they wanted to add.
Councilor Fishmine.
Well, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, Chief Deputy. Glad to hear that it appears to be a partnership, some steps forward. You know, I look at our surrounding towns, and I know that our surrounding towns have used this successfully. You know, especially with incidents that are going on overnight. You know, you're able to get something out quickly. It's almost like a mini neighborhood watch for the entire town. I look at, I mean, the animal control shelter has a Facebook page. And they use and have used it in that manner to get information out. So I really appreciate, you know, like four years ago, four or five years ago, I think there was a feeling that our officers weren't doing enough for drug arrests in town. And I saw, I don't know if it was a concerted effort or there was a change. There was a public relations aspect that took, the police department took on. I could see it where, you know, there was no publication as to what efforts were being done. And then all of a sudden, we're starting to get press releases. And I think, you know, the sentiment in the community was, yeah, they are doing something. And I think it's really important to community relations that you're not strangers, you're part of our community. And I think this is a way to do it. So, you know, I'm just glad to hear that it appears that you're supportive, that you're looking for a vehicle for that. I certainly, as, you know, Jason said, every time you guys send out a press release, I try and get it out there. You know, Jason and I are rushing, rushing to the keyboard because we think it's important that the public knows that you guys are doing something. You know, we, you had the incident with the murder here in town. A lot of people asking questions. There were people that were scared, you know, they read about somebody died. You know, what's going on? And, you know, I don't think the press necessarily covered it very well. And you guys put out a press release. This is what's going on. This is what we're doing. And I think it was very helpful to our community at large that they knew that it was a family situation that, you know, don't necessarily need to be that fearful of our fellow neighbors. So I look forward to seeing some good stuff coming out. So thank you, and thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Councilor Morone.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I guess, you know, when you identified the issue with press releases, right, is that you have a very limited sort of audience. And in my estimation, Facebook also has a sort of limited audience. As I look at, you know, people that I know on Facebook, the average age is probably older than me. Kids are not on Facebook by and large, right? So, so I guess what my question to you is what tool do you see as being more to your advantage? If not Facebook, like the autodiler, obviously, is certain skewed to an older demographic. But like text alerts or what, in your estimation, would be?
I mean, in a perfect world, I mean, you would utilize all social media, I mean Twitter, TikTok. You would use Instagram, you know, there's different things out there. Other agencies have YouTube pages where they can put out different things. I mean, I think that, you know, in speaking with the mayor, a start is a website that we can control and put our own information on, and then go from there. You can't post a lot of things to that. I would like to get away from the paper press releases because it's really antiquated. It doesn't work. It doesn't really give you a feel of what we're doing. You know, we have Domestic Violence Week coming up in October that our officers put a lot of effort into. I mean, it's something that can't, you know, we can't do justice by a press release. Call if you were a cop. We have an event going with SCOW, you know, we can't put pictures on a press release. I mean, it's important to put our own stamp on what we're doing and give people an idea of what the agency is doing in the community. So, you know, anything past a paper press release is a win for us right now.
So, because I think we're largely supportive of whatever you want to do. I guess my question, do you know of other departments that manage this? Like so Instagram, and like there's so many different social media platforms, right? So do you know how other departments would manage something like this?
So, you know, and speaking of other agencies, they have one officer or an administrator and officer that's, you know, job is to update the page, whether it be Twitter or Instagram or Facebook. If they made an arrest, their job would be to update it. If there was a video or something community-oriented, they would put it out and just monitor it. Because the most important thing, if you're going to commit to a platform, is that you need to be current with it. You can't let it lapse. Can't be a couple of months. You can't put, you know, it needs to be updated where the public knows that it's being monitored and that someone's actively using it. So, you know, if you're going to commit to that, it is a big commitment. But you need to make sure you follow through on that because without it, it's, it really, it doesn't do it any justice. It's kind of intuitive to what the message would be.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Anyone else on the council? Any members of the public? Thank you. Name an address for the record, please.
Hello. Oh, my gosh, this one's loud. Okay. Hello, everyone. My name is Danielle Lutz, 57 North Street. I'm a new resident here to Wallingford. I think the town is absolutely beautiful, has a lot of charm. I just want to say that I am fully in support of some type of social media presence. I recently transferred from a different community where I lived for 16 years. And when I came here, I was just shocked that we don't have a lot of social media presence with different departments within the community here. So I would be fully in support of some type of social media presence coming from the police department because what we're seeing in the news right now is there's so much crime going on. There's so many things that really need to get out to the public quickly. And yeah, a paper press release, I mean, my age range, we're not looking at paper forms that much anymore. I mean, social media is right in the palm of our hand. And I just wanted to say that I would be fully in support of any type of social media presence, whether it's Facebook, Twitter, what have you. And I think that, yes, some of our youth obviously are not using certain platforms for social media. So it would be nice to kind of incorporate maybe a few different options. But I think that's, I think this would be a great addition to the community. Thank you.
Thank you.
Riley O'Connell, Blossom Lane again. Hopefully, I'm getting this to work this time. I also just wanted to say that I'm fully in support of having some social media presence, especially a Facebook. For, I imagine most of the councilors are aware of this, but we have, thank you. We currently, currently the largest Facebook group in town is called Positively Wallingford. And it's a bit of an ironic name because there's not too much positivity on there. But the reason that that group was formed was in response to Hurricane Sandy. And granted, this wouldn't just be the police department. This would be something that maybe, you know, having the fire department have a role in this kind of social media outreach as well as helpful in other town resources or town departments. But it was created so that neighbors could communicate with each other when they needed help in response to this natural disaster. It was so that they could be notified when roads were not operable, when people needed help, when, you know, you couldn't get to certain parts of town. And I think this would be the kind of thing that the police department could use and the fire department, those kind of things. Facebook would be the fastest way. I mean, even we saw this currently with the most recent tropical storm, which ended up not, you know, thank God, not being nearly as bad as we predicted. But people were going on there to ask each other, you know, no one really having much more information than the other. And I think that's a great avenue that we could then at least, someone could at least share the post that the police department would do. And likewise, I mean, I had people reaching out to me, and I'm not an elected official. I had two people reach out to me, ask about where would they go for shelter if they needed it during, if the tropical storm did get so bad. And I didn't really know where to direct them either. So many other towns do have it, and I'm very glad you brought up training because I've seen many other towns not use it correctly, and it can be a real legal nightmare. So I think that's a great idea, and that's why, even though Facebook itself is free, I'm hoping you'll get funding for that as well. But like other members of the public here, I'm strongly in support. Thank you.
Mr. Comerford.
Bill Comerford, Broadview Drive. Thank you for being here, Chief. I was one of the people that asked Councilor Zandry and Mr. Fishmine to put this on there. It concerns me that there's a lot of things that happen in this town and we don't find out about it. And we have to find out through other sources. And I just think that this would be a tool in the toolbox to benefit the community at probably minimal cost. The difficult part of it is the administration, the mayor has the last say. I don't think that the chief probably, and I don't want to put words on his mouth. I don't think that he would object to it, but at the same time, at the end of the day, the taxpayers need to know that everybody's hands are tied on this unless the mayor approves it. That being said, about eight months ago, somebody tried to get into my wife's Mercedes and two of our BMWs 1:30 in the morning. They approached our sidewalk. I got up. The person made an attempt to get into our front door, proceeded to walk down our, I'm on a ranch. He was, the only thing that separated me with them is a 16-foot pane of glass. Okay, this is at 1:30 in the morning. Flipped the lights on, guy didn't face them. Since that time, I installed different type of protective devices. And I came back from Maine about a week and a half ago, and I found out that a Marine four houses down from us, they, at 1:30 in the morning, tried to extract his catalytic converter at 1:30 in the morning. So right after that happened, there was the incident on, I think it was Whitney Avenue in Hamden on a Monday, two weeks ago, where I believe there was three suspects that were going through people's mailboxes or whatever in Cheshire, Cheshire-Hamden line. And they proceeded to go across Whitney and was hit broadside by a bus. One of them had to be extracted from the car. Two of them escaped. Then I find out that they were apprehended two streets away from me. I knew nothing about this. There's small kids in the neighborhood. There's all kind of activity going on. I have to find out and get alert from Hamden Police Department or Cheshire Police Department what's going on two streets away from me. And this occurred, I'm guessing, and I could be wrong, maybe the chief can, I'm sure he's got a memory, better memory than me. But it was right around noontime, maybe just shy before that. So all these things are going around. I know nothing about it. And as recently as, I think it was today or yesterday, there was a situation in Marlborough where a woman got assaulted. They stole her vehicle with, or she was forced into the vehicle. And then she ends up in Berlin, assaulted, her car gets lit on fire. Southington, I think yesterday, had seven separate instances. Nobody knows anything. And it's troublesome because this is a tool that these two professionals could utilize at a minimum amount of cost to let me know if it falls under their, whatever their agenda is going to be with this. their, their agenda's going to be with this, to let us know as a community. Sure, road, road closures, issues with tornadoes, and, and to be crystal clear on this, the police did respond. And the sad thing is, is that when I talked to the, talked to the responding officers, it was in my impression that they rely on social media to try to find out what's going on themselves, which is pretty scary. They have to go out on neighbors and so forth, whereas if there's, if there's some way to access things that happened to me, or they can post, hey, by the way, this is what's going on in this area. I, I'm not saying that we need to do this as a vehicle to say, all these things going on in our town, but at the same time, public safety should be first and foremost, and that's what these guys do. So if they know what, there's an area, well, they're up on whatever, Chestnut or, or wherever it is, it kind of gets the, 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 the better feel-good moment, at least for me, knowing that they're keeping us abreast. For example, I ended up calling the chief, I said, what's going on with this? Do you know anything about it? And he, and he actually said, yeah, I do, and, you know, this is what happened, and, and it, it was two streets away from me. So, I don't think that, other than the fact that the mayor is the only one that could squash this, it doesn't make sense not to do it. And you guys have, at least, I'm, I'm, I'm hearing that you hopefully will support it, and if it doesn't happen, at least we know it's him. Thank you very much.
Anyone else? Gentlemen, thank you for joining us this evening to talk about this.
Thank you very much.
Be interested to see what happens. There being no further business on the agenda, a motion to adjourn is in order.
So moved.
Moved and seconded, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing none, I declare this meeting adjourned.